Shek Pachway viewers and listeners, I am Robin, the editor, producer and co-host for War Cry Podcast. I want to thank all of you and our guests for this final episode from season one. It was recorded in November 2020. I personally apologize for the delay in its release, but I hope you all enjoy this wonderful conversation that we had with Seattle City Council member Deborah Juarez and staffer Negan, as well as keep an eye out for season two, episode one to be released later in June. Quahtanu Shmash.
Welcome to this episode of War Cry Podcast. We are an all-native run podcast discussing data, events, issues and historical connections about Northwest missing and murdered natives. Thank you for joining us for this episode, episode 10. My co-host today are Robin Peabody and Patsy Whitefoot.
We also have two guests today, and I would like to let them both introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Deborah Juarez, and I'm an enrolled member of the Blackfeet Nation, and my name is Natrui Mistisake, which means holy mountain woman. And I am currently, and I currently sit on the Seattle City Council.
Hi, I'm Nagin Komkar. I'm the, I'm one of the staffers for Councilmember Juarez, and in my policy portfolio includes Native communities. Thank you for having us today.
So the first question that I would like to ask for both of you is, what drew you to the work that you do today? Like what drew you to work for the city of Seattle?
Man, Robin, that's such a loaded question. Girl, you have no idea. Let me say, what drove me probably craziness? Let me tell you, being on Seattle City Council is not like being on tribal council, obviously. I've been a lawyer for over 33 years and represented just about every tribe in the state and then some, including my own. I always knew I was going to run for office, and we went to a district system, so I ran for office and I won. This is my second term. I would just say, as Patsy knows, I am 61 years old, and I started my career as a public defender, and then I went to Evergreen Legal Services and represented tribes in USV Washington. Yes, this plane's tribes secure the coastal tribes' shellfish rights. You're welcome. And then I was the King County Superior Court Judge, and then I lost an election, and I went down to Olympia, and I worked for a couple governors, and then I went to Wall Street and managed tribal money and built big stuff all through Indian country beyond casinos and hotels. We did hospitals and clinics and tribal centers and you name it, outlet malls. And then I made the decision, after I went to law firm and became a partner and was chair of the Tribal Practice Group, in which we represented the Yakima Nation and almost just like every other tribe in economic development. And then I made the decision I wanted to do what I've always wanted to do, and that was to run for office, and that's where I find myself today. And I would love to have, you know, I've been listening to your podcasts, and I have to say, it's just a couple of them I teared up. It was very emotional. It's so nice to hear Indian women speaking, just the cadence in your voice, the emotion that you bring to it, and probably because I know Patsy, so I can, when she talks, I can hear it. And now seeing Emily and Robin, it's just, I feel like I've, I've known you guys, and what really makes me kind of laugh to myself is these are like four Yakima badass women. You don't want to mess with these people. So thank you for having me.
Thank you so much for coming on. Like, we were really excited and we're really happy that Patsy and you were able to connect. Also today, Lucy had some prior engagements, but she would have really loved the conversation as well. Nagin?
To make sure I'm unmuted here. Well, thank you for asking me as well. I am, I've always been very much inspired by what it looks like for women in leadership. I believe women who work together move mountains, and I've been kind of attracted to the industry and the political industry. And I worked in Olympia for a couple of years for Judy Cliburn. She was the Chair of the Transportation Committee, learned about transportation there, and I had an opportunity to apply to work for Councilmember Juarez and learn more about Native communities and how intergovernmental relations works. I think a lot of people still have a very old perspective of what tribal government looks like, and it's incredibly important. I'm learning a lot, and I'm very honored to be on this show where, in your capacity in the media, you're elevating very important voices. So, thank you.
I'm just wondering, you know, I know that there's a history and, you know, working relationship between Patsy and Councilwoman Juarez, and I just wonder if Patsy, you can share a little bit of insight into that and ask the second question?
Certainly. I just wanted to say that Deborah also spent some time here on the Yakima Reservation when she was much younger, and so she does have a relationship to our communities here, and she knows where our communities are located. I think that's important despite her age right now. I do want to just say that early on, you know, I've known Deborah for a while and just very actively engaged with the politics of not only a local government, but also state, regional and federal government. And, and so it's important that someone like Deborah is in her position in the city of Seattle and representing the Native voice there, while she represents, you know, her constituents where she lives. I think it's important that, you know, just the fact that she's on Seattle City Council is important in itself. Similar to Ms. Gonzalez, who's on City Council in Seattle, she also has a history in the Yakima Valley. And so for that reason, that's why I wanted to make certain that Deborah was here, but also because of the work she's been doing around the missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls. I know she's worked very closely with the Seattle Indian Health Board, and we had Abigail Echahock on a podcast earlier. So I just would like to have Deborah talk about, you know, what, you know, what got her to the place where something that she thought was important to address, particularly in the city of Seattle. I mean, we were to have another guest, Laura John, from the city of Portland, but she's not able to be with us today. But just the fact that you have, you know, we have numerous relatives living in the cities and want her to also highlight that as well. So thank you for being with us, Deborah.
Thank you, Patsy. And you know, I want to, I want to, just if I can, I know you invited me on this missing murdered issue, and before I, there's a few points I want to share, but before I go any further, when I was listening to the podcast, and I was listening, I don't know if it was Emily's voice or Robin or Lucy or whomever, but one of you in the intro talked about why you're doing the podcast and the balance for Native women of strength and vulnerability. I mean, that, that really struck a chord with me because Patsy asked me to do this, and, and today is my mother's birthday. And I lost my mom in January, and she would have been 84. And she was a full-blood Blackfeet woman, and her Indian name was Kwanake, and I used to have her name until I got my adult name about 10 years ago. And so when you were talking about the vulnerability piece, and then I listened to Abigail, phenomenal podcast you all did with Abigail. And Abigail talked about, you know, be who you say you are. It's just, today's just been a very emotional day for me, and I just want to thank you for providing a space where I can be vulnerable, because I think sometimes as Indian women, like what you see with African-American women, we're expected to have the strong back and strong shoulders 24/7, all the time for everybody. And I think when you guys provide a space where I can say, not only is it a space I can be vulnerable, but where I can share that, you know, I have flaws, and I stumble, and I make mistakes, and I try to do right. But at the end of the day, like Abigail was saying, you know, be who you say you are, we have to, we have to support and love each other. And as I was telling Robin before the show started, it's moments like that where I really miss being around Indian women and being in Indian country and just talking and visiting. I think that's where we've come up with our greatest ideas and strengths. So I want to thank you for that. Just to be a little bit nerdy here, on the missing murdered Indigenous women, without going through all the detail, I've known obviously about this issue for well over a decade, and I know that the Yakima Nation had some of the highest number of missing women. And we worked and understood what was going on at Seattle Indian Health Board and working with Esther Lacerro and Abigail Echahock. And when their report came out in November of 2018, I believe, in one year, November of 19th to the, to the day, with the help of Nagin, who's here with us today, who's my right-hand person on staffing this, we are the first city that created not only a resolution supporting this, but actually an ordinance and funded a position for a strategic advisor within the Seattle Police Department to work on missing murdered Indigenous women, girls casework, and got a contract with that position to work with the Seattle Indian Health Board to lead the training and technical support to the SPD staff. And we did that all with the help, obviously, of Abigail. And I know right now in Seattle that the big topic is participatory budgeting. Well, this, again, you know, we are out front on this. This is what we've been doing, and I think Nagin pointed that out as well, if you want to add anything, Nagin, where we listened to what was happening in community. We know what was happening, and I got to leverage my role, my privilege, sitting on the Seattle City Council, having Native communities in my committee to say, it isn't just enough to have, you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day. That's not why I was elected. I was elected to actually pass laws and dedicate money to an issue where we have been deemed invisible. And when, I don't know if you guys had a chance to see the video, I don't know if you can see when we passed that law that day and then the budget process. I opened, my opening remarks, which got me very emotional, and most of my colleagues, one of my, the council president started crying, is the analogy between the Indian Child Welfare Act from 1978 to the missing murdered Indigenous women. There's a lot of parallels in history that's painful. In the Indian Child Welfare, you know, they took our children, and under missing and murdered, our women went missing. In both instances, it was done by the government, not paying attention not only about the data, but not seeing us. I think the parallels are profound. And it's sad that in 2020, we are still looking at this type of legislation for basic human rights, and the people that are hurting the most are our children and our women, quite frankly. And one of the things that I, I really loved what Abigail said in the podcast, and I think I heard, I don't know if it was Emily or, or Robin followed up on, she made a comment that I've heard her say before, which was powerful for me, is that, you know, all data is a story. And that's really what we're doing here, and that's what I think I do as an elected, is I, as I take the stories from the community that tell me, and I try to translate that into, what does that look like as a policy? And how do I execute that and pass the law for that? And we're still doing it. I just want to thank you for this space. I, there's nothing more I can add to what Abigail already done. God help the person that has to speak after Abigail Echahock. It's like having to speak after Uncle Billy Frank. It's like, man, who did the lineup here? So I hope that answered your question about, and we can, and I don't know if Nagin wants to add anything more, because Nagin is kind of being, she's, that's what I love about her, maybe the way Nagin was raised, a lot like us. She, I mean, Nagin rolls up her sleeves and does the work. I mean, she's on the phone, she's doing memos, she's doing emails. She's whipping, making people, you know, get it together on the Seattle City Council staff, working with Seattle Indian Health Board, working with their lobbyists, working with SPD. Nagin, do you want to share a little bit about, just quickly, how you brought that together, how we made that a law? Because I think that's important for people to hear. I think we know what the problem is, what the epidemic is.
Definitely. Thank you, Councilmember. The ticket from point A, which was working with every, here, let me back up. Ticket from point A to point B, which was to have a position funded to address at least the data piece, required sharing the report, sharing why there was a report, sharing who the Seattle Indian Health Board was and, and what it is they were advocating for, and kind of a series of a lecture with every single person that I had to speak with to get the legislation rolling. So there's that phrase that you, the sausage-making of legislation. So if you do a slow-mo roll of that and insert the same lecture to every single office that I had to work with to kind of get people up to speed, it was a very long process. So having to kind of understand how the city council can support Native communities on policy, who are we working with? And we didn't, we don't have a point person right now, and that's the reality. And we have a lot of people coming to the council member to, to get feedback and, and to find the connections to our subject matter experts into the community. Being able to then work with the Seattle Police Department was the next step, and understanding their internal process from working with the assistant to a specific chief that I needed to speak with, explaining what MMIWG was and why, why the current data collection method doesn't work. So that was pretty much, that's the cycle of how I had to work with in the city to kind of get people to understand what this epidemic is, what it means, and why there is an urgency to it. And then once we got the legislation started, the council member just made sure that the Seattle Indian Health Board, the Data Division, which is the Urban Indian Health Institute Director, Abigail Echahock, who's brilliant, to make sure that their research was the center of that legislation that we passed, Resolution 31900. And I'll make sure to send you, Emily, that link. And then we took off from there. So it's a lot of teaching.
I agree. It's, it's a lot of teaching, and thank you, Deborah and Nagin, for that, you know, quick overview. I know there's a lot of work that went into that. So just listening to you, I, I think you make a wonderful point about the need for a point person. That seems, you know, is a challenge, I think, just, you know, within our tribes and communities. There isn't a point person to address this longstanding issue. And then also just understanding the urgency of this, this topic that we're talking about. It's not, you know, not only for our women and girls, but also all Native missing people that are part of our community. So I really appreciate that overview and just want to say thank you in, in the way of our coastal relatives, lift up my hands to you as well for this important work. I would also like to just, you know, on the work that you've shared, I'd also just like to ask if you can continue sharing with us about that work and also, you know, feel free to also communicate with us as you continue down this road.
Yeah, and I, that's a wonderful, I know sometimes people have the emotional side, and we should, and the passionate side about when our women and our children and our daughters go missing. And it was so wonderful to have these reports come out that like Abigail Echahock did. So we, we basically know that this report came out, the, the Echahock one in 18. And I think for Seattle, which we would have done anyway, but you know, Seattle ranked number one among the cities with the highest number of missing murdered Indigenous women and girls. And we knew that the US justice system was ill-equipped to serve the needs of Indigenous people. We, we just know that. We, we all grew up knowing that. That's why we have to get it done. And we knew that homicide is the third-leading cause of death among American, Indian and Alaskan women. I mean, think about that, homicide. That is, somebody's killing our women, third-leading cause of death. And so we knew that this type of data of violence, we know that it's incomplete, and we know that it was racially misclassified. That's what Abigail's report taught us. And then what we did, and what Nagin put together and working with Francesca, and that she's the person, the staffer, policy person at Seattle Indian Health Board, is kind of broke down what our resolution would do, that is, Seattle City Council Resolution, which we originally ultimately turned into an ordinance that is a law, is number one, and I'm sure you've heard Abigail say this, but when they say decolonize the data, what she's, what she really also mean, what's kind of the, the drop menu to that, is well, number one, engaging with the community. Number two, having all law enforcement work together. That means everybody. Number three, working with organizations like the Seattle Indian Health Board, United Indians, Chief Seattle, Daybreak Star, and also those with subject matter specialists. And then, of course, to work on identifying missing murdered Native women and girls as Native. And also, which I've pushed hard, is that we have to leverage and work with tribal governments and use their resources as well. Moving from that and, and working with urban Indian organizations, we had to say, okay, that's all good and fine. You have the law, but we need to put money, we need to fund these positions so we can support capacity building within the Seattle Police Department and the King County Deputy and Coroner's Office. So they understand that we actually have a person who knows how to, how to work with the data, to work with the tribes, that knows Indian country, how we work together in a network, and what resources we use to go looking for and count when our women and children go missing. With that, we, we moved the core of how we moved the legislation forward. And we did fund a position, and we're really proud of that. And we also funded a $90,000 contract with Seattle Police Department to work with Seattle Indian Health Board. And Nagin, did we put the salary at 160 for the Strategic Advisor, the missing and murdered?
It's a little bit less, but it's about, yeah.
So I, I'm, I mean, I, I'm really about, I'm kind of a practical get-it-done person. I like to kind of look at a problem, figure it out, not so much take a leadership role, because I think as Native people, how we're raised, I think you, you probably all know this just intuitively without even, but I think I should articulate it. I don't believe that particularly Indian women, at least I've never seen it, and I'm 61, and I've done a lot of things. I, I never see a hierarchical, at least one that's been successful. I've watched Native women, if you will, I mean, they are, they're, they're leading from behind. They're making sure the people at the end are getting through. They're making sure the women and the children and our elders are getting through. And that's kind of my style of leadership. I don't need to be at the front of the line with the slogan screaming the loudest. I like to be behind, being strategic and guiding people and seeing what the long game is. And so us, as we, Nagin and I, working with Colleen and our, Abigail, a bunch, a bunch of folks, a bunch of women, including when we went back to Washington DC and met with Congresswoman Howland and Sharice Davis, we looked at the, the federal model, we looked at Savannah's Act, we looked at the Violence Against Women Act, we looked at what the state of Washington did, we looked at the Washington State Patrol's report, which Abigail, I was kind of smiling, listening to her podcast. And, and then I think we took the best of all worlds, and we got it done. And Patsy, people like you and Auntie Julie and Virginia and Mukashude and our, our friends up at Snoqualmie, Sussana and Jolene and our friends up at Talela, I mean, I could just rattle up a bunch of Native women. They were the ones all the time calling me, why are you doing this? How are you getting done? What do you need? What, how can we help you? We weren't like having big Zoom meetings and press conferences and, you know, showcasing ourselves. Nagin was just on the phone talking with all kinds of people and myself, and then we ended up going to Washington DC, and we submitted, I submitted Abigail's name, and we honored her at the Native American Honored Women's Luncheon, which I think is in its 27th year, and we got Senator Kamala Harris to introduce Abigail and do a speech about Abigail, and then Abigail got up there and just blew everyone away. But the more, and the more we keep this on the front burner, we cannot let it go. I think we have to learn the mistakes, not our mistakes, of what happened with the Indian Child Welfare Act. I mean, it's kind of, it's exciting, but it's sad that in the last couple months, our new Justice, Raquel Matoya Lewis, issued an opinion about Indian Child Welfare, where it's now going to be interpreted more expansively. I'm hoping 30 years from now, when we have these kind of laws on the book, that we're still not fighting about words and telling the state and the feds to apply a law liberally, because these are actually people that are dying and going missing. And I think that's, that's kind of the, the downer side of me, kind of, you know, but, but the opinion, if you get a chance to read it, by Justice Raquel Matoya Lewis, is actually very touching and very beautiful, and to me is a testament why you need Native women in positions of leadership, not just for, you know, because of, because it looked, because of the optics, but because they have the heart and the soul and the intellect to translate our Native knowingness into a, to Western concepts of law, to change it. And so I know that's a long-winded answer, but I wanted to share that with you because it means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to you.
I, I actually love that you bring up that connection and this aspect of youth and connecting kind of the thorough line between what impacts our youth. That's something that we've definitely talked about here on the podcast. You know, when I was young, I actually went to school at Browning for a couple of days.
Good. You loved it, huh? You know you love Browning. Come on now.
I went to Browning. Um, my best friend moved away when I was in elementary school, and the parents didn't ask our permission, so then we didn't ask their permission, and we organized a trip where I would go over there, but our spring breaks were on different timelines. So then I had to go to school, and I don't know how we impacted policy to allow me to attend a school from a completely different state. But, you know, Browning is very small, and I, I really got to see, you know, the people in the land and, and see where my best friend is from. We're still friends. He lives there now. But this aspect of where we come from, our roots, making sure that our children have access to that and aren't taken away from that is definitely relevant. I know that sometimes in a lot of Western societies, they want us to talk in linear and point this to this to this. But yeah, we're totally circular here. We're totally like, we'll round it back around for that. But I, I do want to take it back to this aspect and note of work together in a network. And I'm so excited to hear all the different success and the other parts of it. And the report you mentioned, obviously, by Urban Indian Health Institute and Esther and Abigail and their team does include a Yakima woman, you know, that was murdered in Seattle, Sandra Smiskin. Her son, George Lee, we interviewed, still an unsolved homicide case. And, you know, when I'm thinking of this question, and you covered so much of everything that's happened with Seattle, I was actually down the street when you read that resolution at a different meeting. And I, I was like 1.2 miles away, and in my rural mind, right, we're in Yak reservation, it takes me four minutes to go that far over here. That does not take that long in Seattle. I completely missed it. You know, I, I didn't know the timing of it. I forgot how long it takes to get around. But, you know, I, I am interested in hearing, like, what was the response to your colleagues, especially your non-Native colleagues, fellow elected officials, other people that you've worked with? You always have a longstanding career in the legal system as an attorney. What was the response to seeing this report that Seattle ranked highest for urban cities for missing and murdered Indigenous women?
That's, first of all, that's, I'm sorry you didn't make it, Emily. You're right. That's kind of, yeah. You're like, I thought it was a two. No, it was a one. I am so glad you asked that question because it's twofold for me. And I'm going to try to not be so emotional or wonky, or I'm going to try to answer this as a, as a, as an elected, but also as, as just a practical Native woman that's been doing this stuff. Unfortunately, this report and how stark and, and it should be chilling. I've seen other reports like this, just being a lawyer to tribes, just being a lawyer and just, you know, in Indian country. And a lot of people still, it, it doesn't pulsate. It doesn't, it doesn't resonate because it's, it's not, it's not their people, and it's not a world that they can imagine. It's kind of like when I read the report that I think the number two killer in one in Indian country of our men is alcohol-related violence on the reservation and driving. You know, it, some people are just non-pulsed, and my job as an elected is to get them saying, you know, in Indian country, you need to adopt, what we see is that I belong to you and you belong to me, and we have to create this world better for each other, regardless of whether or not you belong to a tribe, because these are human beings and these, these are human rights. When we get to the actual, this actual piece of legislation, it was very emotional. Our council president, Council President Bruce Harrell, been on council for 12 years, start crying. He told me, it was very profound. He never understood the connections, because I said in my opening remarks, I, I started out talking about the Indian Child Welfare Act, and then another council member, Councilmember Bagshaw, started weeping. And for me, I, I didn't have any tears left, because I, I understand this, and obviously at an emotional level, at a, just at a whole, at a cellular level, and we all grew up around it, and we all know the violence that can go on on a reservation. Being honest with ourselves, we, we know that we have a lot of violence and domestic violence and a lot of crimes that go unreported and unprosecuted in Indian country. So the response was kind of, it was, it was more than a wake-up call. It was empathy. It was understanding, and I'm really proud of all of my colleagues, because they voted yes unanimously on the resolution, yes unanimously on the ordinance, and yes unanimously on the budget to, to fund the position and the contract with the Seattle Indian Health Board. But I felt a real responsibility to not just bring the issue on an emotional level, because I like to, particularly, we all should, when we are elected, that I wanted this piece of legislation to have the emotion and the pain. I wanted that to be the ink on the paper. I didn't want it just to be a I didn't want it just to be another piece of legislation where we're just funding another position because a certain community group felt like they wanted it. I wanted this to be longstanding and I'm hoping when I leave this job, I can continue that arc of continually bringing these issues that harm our people to government to take their money and give it to our community so we can address those issues, whatever they are, and make that happen. So overall, the response was good. And I'm hoping that, I mean, sometimes I get a little annoyed with some of the electives because they get more worked up about, you know, somebody's going to drill in Alaska than they do about, "We're the number one city with the most missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls." That should set your hair on fire and break your heart. Yes, I care that they're drilling for oil in Alaska. I'm not going to say that's not important. But we would get more people packed into City Hall over that than a committee meeting on missing and murdered. And that to me, but that doesn't, that doesn't stop Nagin and I. That didn't stop our tribal leaders from working as hard as we did and getting the work done. But I'm not going to lie, sometimes it does get a little disheartening that our lives aren't valued. And I like that Pathy also put in here, not just missing murdered Indigenous women and girls, but we are seeing amongst our LGBT community and our trans women community, the numbers have spiked on missing and murders, which no one is addressing for our true spirit society.
So along that same line and appreciate the question that Emily asked, but along that same line in talking about the work that you're doing at the community level, I'm curious also about the engagement of the families in this process. Because that's a question that I've asked when you take a look at the various legislation, proposed regulations, et cetera. Communities are somewhat at the bottom and in some cases, families aren't even included. So I'm curious about that and the role that the city of Seattle took in to involve families in this topic. Because when you think about the families, you know, I've worked in education and in the school systems, I've heard our children talk about this issue because they had a family member, a woman, missing and/or murdered. And because just the way the schools are set up, the schools aren't equipped to necessarily respond to this. We might have school counselors, however, their focus isn't necessarily on the social, emotional needs of our children. And so when you're talking about our children who are facing violence in our communities, I think this is an issue, you know, that we really need to pay attention to about the voice of parents and families and loved ones.
Pathy, that's a really good point. And when we talked about decolonizing the data and when Nagin and I wrote the legislation, it is clear upfront, particularly because of the work that we learned from Abigail to write this, is number one, first and foremost, contacting tribal communities means talk to the families. Talk to the tribe. If you, if there's a, if the family comes forward and says, "Our daughter, we haven't heard from her in 24 hours or 72 hours, whatever that is." That person that we are going to hire is going to work to know, because they know Indian country, to contact the tribe, to contact the family, to contact the tribal school, to leverage tribal resources, meaning tribal police, tribal community, whatever is there, because we know how to do that as Native people growing up in Indian country, to leverage all of those resources to go looking. What you have, and you'll see it everywhere, not just in missing and murdered, is you have a siloed effect to crime and violence in Indian country. You have the states, you have the feds, and you have the tribal police. And what I'm trying to do in my own way, and I don't think it's good enough, but for now, you know, until I can continue this arc, is to blend all of those resources together with the sole objective of going, looking when our children and women go missing. That's the number one thing. I would tell people, "Did they talk to the tribe?" "No." "Well, we contacted the tribal police." "Well, did you talk to the council? Did you talk to the school counselor? Did you actually go physically talk to the family?" I mean, it's just, it's interesting how the non-Indian world still gets confused about how to work with Indian country. When I used to represent tribes and had younger lawyers below me and I had to teach them stuff, I would tell them, you know, "You need to learn how to work in Indian country, like I needed to learn how to work in the federal and state system." I didn't just make two phone calls and say, "I don't know, it didn't happen or they didn't call back." You got to learn the system. You know, you got to, if you're going to represent tribes, you need to understand their government inside and out. You know, their strengths and weaknesses, just like you do with the state or the feds, and leverage those resources. So getting back to your question, yes, Pathy, that was number one in there. And that's what we learned from Abigail in her report. When you say contact tribal communities, that's what it means. And it means everything. Family first, though, and taking them seriously. You know, we had our young woman go missing back at Blackfeet and I feel bad that I can't remember her name right now. And when they found her, you know, I hate to say this, but you know, the tribal police, they weren't all, they weren't all working together with the feds and the state. You can't just assume she's, you know, I've heard this from not just this young woman, but other things. Well, they were out, you know, at a party or they were at a powwow or they, this just happens. You know, when you see what happens to a white girl that goes missing, that's how the Amber Alert started, people lose their minds. And so I'm saying, we should lose our minds when a family comes forward to Seattle Police Department or the King County Prosecutor's Office or the Sheriff's Office and says, "My daughter's been missing," or "My sister's missing," or "My wife is missing." We should have that same alarm that goes off. So that is the awareness. It's sad that in 2020 that I have to, we have to still cultivate this awareness, but we will continue to do that. And maybe this legislation and this law and the people that we hire, the way Seattle is now in the forefront, because we are the first major city in the country to do this. Maybe this will ring, maybe this will ring the alarms that this is, to use a phrase, that our lives matter as well.
Thank you so much. What does community support look like when you're in Seattle? And I mean, not just those in the city, but like what support have you gotten from tribes and other groups when it came to your efforts towards the MMIW and MMIP?
Tribal support was obviously just overwhelmingly wonderful. And I was, we were kind of visiting before you got us online. The tribes behind the scenes, particularly Native women who are on tribal council, you know, offered, I mean, you name it, any kind of technical support. I had tribal chair, tribal leadership, tribal women calling saying, you know, "What do you need? Do you guys, can we do, do you want us to do a symposium on this?" I mean, that's been overwhelming. And when we talk about community, then I'm talking more about Native American organizations. Now, I'm just talking about the city of Seattle, as you know, with Estelle Lucero at Seattle Indian Health Board, Colleen Elkhawk at Chief Seattle, Michael Tully at United Indians, Noreen Hill with Mother Nation. I mean, all of these people, you can count on them 24/7 to come forward. And I've always kind of bristled when people try to make this distinction or, and this is because I'm older and Pathy knows this as well. I never made a distinction between being a quote-unquote "urban Indian" or reservation. I mean, I, you know, I am what I am everywhere I go. And yes, raised differently, but that doesn't take away about who I am as a Blackfeet woman. You know, when we were getting calls from like Oklahoma and California and Oregon about, "Send us your legislation. How did you get this passed? You know, what kind of..." That's why I love what Abigail was saying, because I have the same thought. I'm not going to wait for some government to fund something. I'm just going to get it done. I'm not going to have another committee, I'm not going to have another group, I'm not going to have another roundtable. I'm just going to get it done. And I could not have done that. I'll say this, the tribes here, the Salish tribes here and Washington State tribes are incredibly powerful. If I pick up the phone with any non-Indian elected, a state senator, Senator, like, you know, Senator Murray or Patty Murray and Maria Cantwell, those two senators are phenomenal about working with us in Indian country. When I say, if I rattle off four tribes and they're behind this piece of legislation. I mean, we carry a lot of weight and I'm really proud of that because I think the state of Washington, including obviously, I'm going to say Yakima, have always been at the forefront of tribal sovereignty and tribal rights when the big cases start coming out in the late 70s and early 80s, before you all, three of you weren't born probably, huh, Pathy? So yeah, we also walk to school in 10 miles of snow, I'm just going to say that. They've been like the powerhouse and the vanguard of developing and shaping federal Indian law and policy. You know, the Bernie Whitebears, the Joe Delacruises, the Lucy Covingtons, the Ramona Bennetts, the, you know, God, I could go on and on. I just think of, you know, the people, we just lost Suzette, I'm sorry, Suzette, Masel Bridges and Allison, Allison Godfertson. I mean, I could go on and on, but we carry a lot of cachet here in the state, in this city. And I'm very proud of that. And people like Pathy and Auntie Julie.
I love the shout-outs that you gave on the war cries. We built it right into that segment. Usually we have it at the end, but I love that. It flowed and the vibe of it was good. I want to go back to a point you made. Obviously, we had a whole set of questions and nicely formatted and I'm like bypassing all that.
I tried to pay attention to your questions, but I'm going to be honest with you. I don't have two screens anymore, so I can't open up my other phone to see them, but I remember looking at them last night. So right now, I'm pretty much just, okay, great. So you don't even need to stay on screen. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Back to racial misclassification. And I really want to hone in on this point because I don't think this is an understood point from a lot of the non-Native community, a lot of the true crime community. I don't think they understand why racial misclassification is a big issue when we're facing MMIW. And when you talked about it and I heard the emotion in your voice, I heard this importance of talking to families. You know, my brother actually had an investigation in Bellevue over his death. They didn't understand why a 32-year-old, you know, passed away. And it was eventually ruled natural causes, which, you know, was shocking to us. But we are glad that it didn't have to go further. But there was an investigation, there was a series of different questions that were taking place and everything else. And as I was going through different paperwork of his, I actually saw him racially misclassified when the police stopped him in a car in a previous incident. And so when that got brought up in Abigail's report, I knew it was true. I knew it was true because at least at a different level of just natives being stopped, they were being racially misclassified in Seattle. He lived in Seattle for a majority of his adult years, you know, and he happened to be in Bellevue at that, you know, sleeping. I don't know if this has come up in other cities or areas or how they are addressing it. Like the approach that you have taken and rapid-fired off, I mean, it just shows that you've been in the background or in the support of so many other things in Washington. Because, I mean, I think I blinked and stuff was happening. I feel like, God, I didn't even get done with that load of dishes and Councilwoman Morris is already on her way for...
I have reached Auntie status. I'm loving it. I've reached elder status, man. I could just sit here now and say, "Give me a cup of coffee." And everyone runs and gets me one when I'm back home. So I'm loving it. Pathy knows what that's like. Emily, you raise such a good question. And I, the reason why I'm looking at you and I'm just, all your beautiful faces, but is that, when I, I'm going back to the old days now when I was a public defender. And just now, remember, I'm Blackfeet, but I was raised on the Yakima and the Pialap Res. And I went to college at Western, so I know all the Lummies, the Yakimas, Pialaps, the Squalys, Shoawaters, Squanals. I know everybody. I know family names. So when a name would come up when I was a public defender, sometimes when I get the police report, they'd have racial ID, right? And they would misclassify natives all the time. They'd either put down an M for Mexican, I remember that, this is the late 80s, so, okay. And sometimes they would, never would they ever write Native. It was always, or once in a while, there'd be an I for they think would be Indian. I remember a couple of times them seeing a question mark. But a lot of times, my other coworkers, colleagues would come to me and say, "Does this name, they think it might be Indian," that's what I'd say, if there's an I. And sometimes I would recognize the name. I'm like, "Oh, that's a Kapoleman. Oh, that's a Joe." You know, "Oh, that's a Bill. Oh, that's a Brown. Oh, that's a..." You know, I mean, I can rattle off all these names. And that's just because I grew up here. And if I was back home, I know certain names too. But do you see why it's important, why you've got to have? It's like our way of doing things still works for us in Indian country, but somehow we have to take that template and put it over in non-Indian country. Now, I didn't mind people coming to me, but it got annoying, like, you know what? What if there was a system in place where if you saw Indigenous or Native, you immediately called the detective or said, you know, "What's more information?" "Oh, that's down south. They may be a member of the Mukashude Tribe or the Pialap Tribe. Let me call the Pialap PD and see, you know, what's going on down there." I know David Duennas, and I shouldn't mention David out loud, but a relative. Or, because I would, people would call me and even in my capacity now, even though I'm on Seattle City Council, I love my, I love my people. They still call me, different tribes. I'm like, "Yeah, I'm not your lawyer anymore, but..." Because they, you know, want something and I'm trying to help as much as I can. But we had a murder that happened with a particular tribe and the tribal chair called me. And I called the mayor and the mayor called the chief of police. And it turned out, it was a tribal person and it was a murderer and we were able to connect them with the family within 48 hours. Now, that, think of how that happened. It happened because I used to be the attorney for that tribe. The chair now has my personal number. I'm good friends, I could call, I could call the chief of police, Carmen Best. I could call the mayor and we could get it down to the detective to loop it back. So they found out that was their tribal member, as they had suspected, and were able to bring that person home. Now, it shouldn't be that convoluted, right? The non-Indian world should be able to know, or at least start the inquiry, "This is a Native person. Gee, let's talk to our in-house data person to find out how we take these next steps." And then they should learn, because you can't just say, "This is the one, this is the person where their only job is to do that." No, everybody needs to do that. When we see certain ethnic names, like when I was a public defender, we would say, "Oh, that's a..." It's so funny. It's like we would say, "Oh," this is, I'm really going to the time machine, but when we would see particular Hispanic last names, and that was when the Marietta Bo people were coming in. They were doing all these tons of arrests and sweeps. We knew what group of people, where they were coming from, so we could get to the embassy and the consulate and those communities to let them know or find out that they got arrested or we're representing them. It's like the same thing. You would think as Indigenous people, that the people here, whose land that they're sitting on, would take the time and invest the resources to know these families, tribes, just to pick up the phone. So you raise a really good point. And to this day, I still think when you, when you look at a police report, now they've gotten much better, not so much in the police ticket. If you ever look at a ticket, look at where they put the racial thing. But I know that when detectives now or police reports now, there's more space there now to be more clear about whether or not it's an Indigenous person. But that's just for King County or city of Seattle. I can't speak for other counties.
Deborah, you bring up a great point and the question that you asked about Emily, about the classification, the misclassification. This is an issue that is all over Indian country. And so it's one that we need to continue to make certain we're addressing. We just completed the Affiliate Tribes of Northwest Indians meeting and it is one that's under heavy discussion, particularly in the education community, simply because of the misclassification, misrepresentation, undercount of our Native students as well. So we need to continue working on that. And I just wanted to ask you, along that line, in your role as city council and of course, a position of power and with your background in law enforcement, I mean, an attorney, and just where you're at today, I think that role is important and one that needs to provide support again to families and communities. And the reason I say that and just my own personal experience, you know, there are different questions of my family that were asked because of my sister and the FBI came and did swabs on me in my workplace. And there was never any follow-up from law enforcement. That was totally frustrating for me and our family. When we tried to have a family meeting with the FBI, they changed their mind and didn't necessarily call back and says, "Well, we can't meet now." And so there was never any continuity with law enforcement, particularly the federal agencies. And so in those kinds of circumstances, what are you suggesting for families and communities to be able to address this lack of communication that goes on with law enforcement?
And it's gotten much better than it was in the day when I was a public defender than a King County Superior Court judge, is that law enforcement is, tribal law enforcement is working much better than I've ever seen and it could always be better and more seamlessly with local law enforcement, which is great. We still don't have cross-deputization. In some areas you do, in some areas you don't, in some areas you have feds, in some areas you have state. It depends, as you know, the patchwork of jurisdictional issues that continually plague Indian country. Working with the family and, again... I see the tribal government as an extension, obviously, of the family. I think that tribes. And I, I know it may sound a bit sexist and I, I think Patsy may agree with me on this from what we've watched our whole lives, I think what drove me crazy. As a younger lawyer is that when we would bring up. Kind of the domestic violence and, you know, all these social issues that were going on in Indian country. It was hard to get some of the, the male leadership. To really push hard, but if you said anything about the casino, that's the holy grail there, you, you're not going to mess with the casino. And that used to really upset me, it used to, I thought it was very sexist, it, it, it made me, it was like in the day when we were pushing hard for. God, I think of anything that has to do with social, like even Indian Child Welfare. But trying to get the, the white attorneys to pay attention, they were more worried and, and listening to leadership telling them. The priority for Indian country and tribal leaders is. Well, how we're going to exercise our treaty fishing rights. Now, I'm not saying that that isn't important, but as a native woman, I think that that, the priority, that's not right. We just recently saw the passage of the Savannas Act. And then we're still looking at the pending the Violence Against Women Act of Vawa. And some of these things where it isn't going to be popular for me to say, but I, I, I think part of having courage is not being afraid that people. Will be angry with you or dislike you or even being wrong. We have to hold a mirror up to ourselves in Indian country and our leaders and say what our priorities are. And if Indian country itself, if a tribe is more concerned with their casino and disenrollments. Than they are with, our women are dying, our children, you know, are being sex trafficked. We have a drug problem that's mainly affecting our young women. Then there's something wrong there, we have to address that. And that, 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 I don't want to call that an internal matter, but it, it's the reality. And I'm not saying it's true for every tribe, I'm just saying based on what I've seen. What I've done in my life, that's what it looks like. I'm hoping with this new administration and after November third. I'm hoping that you folks continue and Abigail and all these wonderful people. That this becomes the number one priority at Department of Justice. That we finally take this on, on a federal level, so we don't have this. Patchwork of hard-working Native American women and men. Up front and behind the scenes trying to stitch together a federal policy with money. To activate and implement missing murdered indigenous women and girls, that it's a priority. It's, again, it's one of those things where, okay, you can, you can get Congress to pass the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act. You can make Congress put together a, a gaming panel and, you know, a commission and you can establish a Indian, National Indian Gaming Commission. You could do all these things for that, but we have to beg you to give us money. Subject matter experts, social workers, detectives, data analysts. You can't give us money for that to pour into Indian country when we're talking about women going missing and women being murdered. I think that's a world out of balance. And I think that's on us to train our younger women and men to really address that. And again, I'm going back to what Abigail was saying, you know, I, I just love that saying that, what she says, um, you know, be who you say you are. I hope that answers your question, Patsy, because that's a good one.
Yes, thank you very much, I really appreciate your response, particularly from the role that you're in, you know, someone who is engaged with policy, but also. Your, your background in, uh, as an attorney, uh, providing legal services to particularly the tribes and you pretty much have seen it all. And so really appreciate your response.
Um, I kind of have a follow-up on that, you mentioned DOJ and the White House. You know, you mentioned this federal government response and everything as well as Patsy, I appreciate sharing these personal insights of her family and her story. Growing up as a girl, we learned and saw different cases, but we didn't really hear from families because it's so hard. And I, I really appreciate, you know, your note about, you know, people need to reach out to families and their investigation and I appreciate Patsy. Sharing that personal uh, interaction. The White House announced there's going to be different cold case task force dedicated to missing and murdered indigenous people. And they announced, you know, numerous states. Seattle is number one for missing and murdered indigenous women. But see, but Washington State is not getting a cold case task force, do you have any insight on that, uh, either one of you?
Well, um, first of all, yeah, I, I briefly read Nagin, I have some follow-up, but I, I, I'm glad you brought that up because I forgot about that and I remember being really. Well. Not happy that we weren't involved in that, but I have a feeling after November third. That we will be in more involved in front and center. Um, I didn't even know how they were reaching out for the cold case task force, I just remember reading when, when it happened and looking at it. I, you know, it's kind of like a lot of things that are going on right now under this administration. I, I can't take any of it seriously, I'm just praying to God November third can't come soon enough. And I'm praying and hoping that all those young women who are listening and all women and, and who are in positions of power and authority. After November third, in January, with Department of Justice. That we again re, uh, reconfigure, if you will, or recalibrate that task force. And have people like Abigail front and center. For me, we have so much power when our tribal governments are behind us. When NCAI says this is the number one role, this is the number one policy issue. Mr. President, new cabinet for the next four years. What I love about native women and I watch people like Patsy and, and Auntie Julie and all these women, like again, could rattle off, because I, those women raised me, I was around them. Our power, basically, our, our magic has yet to be felt and heard yet. And I think our moment's coming. And I, it breaks my heart that it's happening because we have to do it through missing and murdered, like we did with Indian Child Welfare. It was the Ramona Bennetts of the day that passed Indian Child Welfare and Fayla Point and, I mean, I could go on and on, but all these native women that were involved. They were the ones that pushed that law back in seventy-eight, seventy-nine. And I think we're going to need this new generation coming up. Um, not just elected native women in Indian country, but everywhere and people like me as well. Where we demand that this becomes um, a federal law, like we did with um, the Indian Child Welfare Act. And it goes into state courts and from state courts it goes into state law enforcement. And from state law enforcement, it goes to county law enforcement and municipality law enforcement, so it's regular course of business. So like, I felt bad that, you know, like, you saw, Abigail had to go out and do all these speeches to raise twenty thousand dollars to get a study done. In what world is that supposed to happen? Government is supposed to serve, that is our job as electors, we're supposed to serve whatever community tells us they need. And so we, as tribal government and we as individual citizens, need to demand or require of this new administration. That missing and murdered indigenous women and girls and Two Spirits are a priority in Department of Justice and not just a task force. I'm, I'm always leery of task force, because now as an elected, I sometimes see people want a task force so they can just kind of set it aside and say, well, we, we have a task force for that. Well, to me, that's not good enough. Because native American women, their lives are human lives, their lives are human rights. And we need to give it the same protections that the United States Constitution gives everybody else across the board. And so that's my, my, uh, my speech on that.
You're just a, a woman full of power. It's so inspiring to hear you, you know, as a younger um, individual and um, just your role is full of power, thank you so much.
I have a question for Nagin, uh, to bring you back in the conversation is. I know that when you started working for Councilwoman Juarez and. You probably were on a steep learning curve about MMIW as well as indigenous issues. When you get asked about things like, well, what is MMIW and what is it that you do, you know, what kind of responses have you given and also what have you learned through all this process?
Um, when people ask, what's the red handprint, what's MMIWG, what does that mean? I immediately, like, I spell it out and I say, this is a current, it's a crisis, it is an epidemic. We've given it, I hope that we, at the city have given it the same urgency that. That we're now seeing with COVID, I, I didn't want to bring that up, but yeah, we're all going, dealing with COVID right now, but it's. And it's so sad, but it's now impacted everyone and. The, our systems of government have shifted and adjusted to respond to that. It, it shouldn't be the case, but we have a slower transition to have. Um, our nation do the same to this epidemic of MMIWG. Um, when it came to the report coming out in twenty eighteen, that was. Very, that was published shortly after I was hired and so I was really thrown into learning about. Everything that has to do with native communities and for me. That meant mapping out all the different tribes in the state, understanding who was sitting on tribal governments, uh, printing out the MMIWG report, actually reading through it. We have a problem if we ask. Why this Operation Lady Justice didn't include Seattle, that's a huge problem. Um, when you don't have subject matter experts and those. Heavily impacted at the forefront of legislation or legislative process. And that's not, and that's what we did with the resolution, the council member. Made sure that the community, um, and those who are in the community, like the Seattle Indian Health Board, were at the forefront of legislation. And if you read the resolution, it strategically, it lays out exactly all those priorities to bring the city together and then move forward. And so, and that's how we engage and that's, and that is, to answer your question, how we. Um, how I engage the other staffers in our other offices, we have nine offices on Seattle City Council. And I, like I mentioned earlier on this show. I have a folder with a list of, um, I've got the Abigail Echoax MMIG report. I have the Seattle Times, um, interview that, but I'll share with you later that the council member was in. On her story and her thoughts on how we're putting this together, the legislation and a timeline, and that's pretty much the introduction and it's a lot, but. That kind of goes with my like verbal one-on-one explanation of what that means for all the other offices, so when it came to. The budget, we already had a resolution that we could point to and say. We are, in the first lines, we are reclaiming the inherent responsibility of the city to protect its most vulnerable populations. So acknowledging its history, acknowledging and accepting where we're at right now, taking responsibility. And like Abigail Echoax said, be who you say you are. And that meant voting on that budget and having the council member sponsor the first position in the nation to, to address MMIWG.
I think Nagin's being a bit, um. She's not, um, I still love about Nagin, she, she is a powerhouse and she, her, I love this about her humility. And her kindness, because it, it didn't take but a minute for Nagin to get on top of this quickly and understand it and learn. Indian country and make those phone calls and those emails and drafting and drafting and working with, um. Was it Francesca, our friend at Seattle Indian Health Board, the policy person on that end? And behind the scenes, I don't know if people really know that, it isn't people like me that actually. They're, they're the ones that do the, they're the ones that do the hard work. You know, me and Abigail are kind of out front, you know, going on and on, but it's the Nagins and the Francescas of the world behind the scenes that are going through the, the fourth draft. And, you know, it's Nagin out there on the second floor whipping votes. And saying, this is what the council member needs, this is why she needs the money, it's Nagin putting together the media stuff for me, the bullet points. Who do I need to talk to, how are we going to get the money out of the budget, where's this going to come from, it's the Nagins of the world that do that. And, you know, um, watching her become so involved in Indian country and get so emotional. And one of the things that struck me about missing and murdered and the symbol that they use, which I knew from a long time ago. In Blackfeet culture, that red handprint, I remember growing up, people thinking that, that was some kind of, you know. They'd have it on T-shirts, but if you look at our culture and our art, if you see a black handprint on a Blackfeet horse, that means that they killed somebody. So that wasn't just, there's a pretty design, that, it meant something. And I don't know if they chose that by, by design, but that's what it means. And so for me, the imagery is very powerful, it, it, it was like a double meaning for me. And so I just, I just, I'm really glad that Nagin's on this call because it's not all me that did all this. She, she did the heavy lifting behind the scenes and I wanted her to be acknowledged for that, I'm glad you asked her that question, it's been interesting, me watching her. Uh, enter Indian country in a different way and learn who the movers and shakers are, and I think she knows now it's pretty much Indian women.
Yep, and that's very kind of you, council member, but you brought up Francesca, she is amazing, she is one of the, uh, she's Government Affairs Director for Seattle Indian Health Board. And has been my partner, um, in, in all of this, I'm on the city side, she's in the community side, um, to bring the legislation forward, so that's my, my war cry for her.
I have one final question, just, uh, you know, as indigenous women, I think it's important that we also just. Know what's going on around the world and the fact that, you know, when we look at the history of this country and other countries, we know that. As a people, the women are, you know, and our people are considered subhuman, that has always just really bothered me and frustrated me. And I still get the sense that's how indigenous women are treated, so I'm curious about any. Communication, advice, questions you might have of other indigenous people from around the world, because they're experiencing similar situations.
You know, my council member, I'll jump in here, there is definitely, um, I mean, this is a, a global crisis and we've seen, I cannot remember the, the event. Um, I think it was like a soccer event, I'm not very athletic, so I don't know. What it was, but there were groups of women that took over the event, um. Last fall, I believe, to bring awareness to missing and murdered indigenous people and. And that was the beginning of my. Journey to understand the scope of this issue worldwide, um, and this was in South America. And so you're, to your point, Patsy, it's, it is on a global scale, you're seeing systems of oppression. Manifest in different ways and different languages and different countries and. The fact that the media was covering it is a good thing and, um, that, that's one thing that I can add to that.
Patsy, I love that question and. You know, it's going back to what Nagin was saying, but first of all, it's, it's been so. Healing for me when I turn on the TV or participated in the missing and murdered marches that went on in Seattle and across the country, we watched it in different cities. And watched the ones in Washington DC. And, but I always am careful that, or watching out with a careful eye that. You know, white women quietly don't co-opt our, our message and what we're, what we're marching for, that it's ours. Um, and we need to hold on to that. So we're not, not just accountable, but that it's ours. And I like what you said because, as you know, maybe it's not popular to say this, but I still feel this way about Hillary Clinton. You know, I think what she said, you know, over, well over a decade ago, is that women's rights are, women's rights are human rights. And believe it or not, in twenty twenty, we're still having to say that. I mean. The clips that I watched of the debate last night, I, I couldn't watch the debate, I watched the clips this morning. Again, you know, being, you know, watching Senator Harris. Who will probably be, will be our next vice president, again, you know, having to tell a white male, I'm speaking, don't talk over me. And I was telling my husband this morning, that's what I've been doing my whole life with white men. Excuse me, let me finish my sentence. You know, excuse me, I'm speaking. Without being labeled, you know, the angry minority, the angry Latina, the bitch, whatever, pardon my language. But every time women, and this is why I miss Indian country, because. I grew up around strong native women who had voices and nobody batted an eye. When they stood up with their fist up for any kind of issue that we had to do, when we took over. Remember, I was on the banks of the Pialap and the Squaly River in the day with Uncle Billy. You know, when Jane Fonda came and all that, I mean, I was twelve, thirteen, I watched all that. I was there when we took over Cascadia, which is now the Pialap Tribal Headquarters, I was twelve or thirteen with Senator Claudia Kaufman. When we took over Fort Lawton, which is now Daybreak. So, and my memories of that, maybe I should write this stuff down, it was mainly, you know, I can, gosh, I think of so many native women off the top of my head, but. It was mainly native women, Indian women, who were throwing us in the back of the car and driving places and telling us to get over fences and to do stuff. We should continue to do that and that's what's propelled me to like go to college and go to law school and do what I've done. Not because I want to be the first at anything, it's because I want to break open that door. And walk through, like I was telling Robin before we went on the air, and, and not have to code switch and bring my indigenous. Personality, my indigenous way of knowing, my indigenous way of leading into the mainstream. I shouldn't have to change the tone of my voice, the inflection of my passion, and it shouldn't be misinterpreted for anger or. the inflection on my passion, and it shouldn't be misinterpreted for anger or ignorance. It, it should be, it should be honored like we do when a white man speaks. And I still have to deal with that, um, to some degree. So I love seeing these young Indian women like Robert and Emily and Nagin now, who's part of our, our family, you know, being so articulate and speaking up and knowing that when, when I walk away and step to the side, which I'm going to soon, that we're in good hands. But a lot of it has to go, a lot of what we still are gonna deal with, and you know this, Patsy, because of your question, is the sexism, not only in, in the outside world, but in, in our own world of, of, in Indian country. There's so many Native American women that I admire, that I watched, that I had the, the honor to meet Wilma Mannkiller was a highlight of my life. I dedicate, when I first got elected, my first speech, when I did my, um, when I was sworn in was dedicated to Wilma Mannkiller. This last time I got elected, my speech was dedicated to my mother. And Leonard Forsman, the chair of Suquamish, for the first time in the city's history swore me in. Now, you would think that should be a big deal. Suquamish, in which this is their indigenous land, the chair from their tribe came to Seattle City Hall and swore in another, the first Native American city councilwoman. You know, those should not be far and few between moments. I'm just hoping that the Creator has, will continue to give me the power to keep opening doors so I can let in and keep widening it for young Indian women to come up the ranks, Indigenous women, and speak the way they speak, lead the way that they were taught to lead, and not feel that they have to make themselves small or change their voice or be quiet because that's what the dominant society expects of them and treats them as. That's kind of my, you know, Native American Gloria Steinem speech, if you will.
Thank you so much for being a strong, powerful Indigenous woman, both of you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Those were, yeah, that, that got me. That's a really great speech. I really love that you said to just be yourself wherever you are. And I really like that a lot. Our final thing that we've been doing is we've noticed people sometimes have questions for us. This podcast has been a process for all of us. And we know that because we've talked to different people and we, you know, are different statuses in the community. We want to know if either Nagin or both of you questions for us as a team or as an individual?
I actually do. I, I, it's my understanding that you guys are the original and only podcast that has four Indigenous women of the same tribe. Is that true?
I believe so. When we first started, we were trying to get a feel of what was out there because we want to, one, support other podcasts that are about MMIW, because there are some. But what we did find is like throughout most podcasts, they were hosted by either non-Natives or by males. And so of course, we all kind of jumped on, we're like, you know, we all need to be on this. Cause at first it was like, like I wasn't planning to be on, but you know, my elder Patsy was like, you need to be on the show. So I was like, okay. You know, you can't tell Patsy no, so. So that's kind of how that happened. But yeah, I don't, I haven't seen any others that were kind of more like this round table style with all Yakima women, are all just Indigenous women, you know, in general.
Well, um, I agree with you. The podcast that I listened to that, and I was paying attention a lot to them for a while there, to the point I was dreaming about it and I was just getting kind of sad, but for a while there, we were entrenched in Missing and Murdered, but not like, you know, not like Abigail was. But I noticed too that they were not Indigenous women and I didn't feel like it was family, like I feel with, you know, looking at you guys and talking to you and I, like Robin and I, you were talking about this before we went on the air. What a, what a, more than a delight and what an honor to be sitting with four Yakima women. Even though a couple of you are Huskies, I'll let that go. To, um, to see that, you know, I think that's why I'm so revealing and there's a vulnerability there. And one thing that I love and I miss, and I had a, we had a fundraiser for Justice Raquel Mottoya Lewis. And 20 minutes before the fundraiser, I was telling Robin this, her and I were on the phone, we've known each other. And we both said almost at the same time, but she said it first and I start tearing up. And then she started, we were on the phone, she said she was feeling emotional too. We both miss Indian country. We both miss being around Native women and just visiting, just, just talking. And the thing I miss most, one of the things I miss most, I missed about, but one of the things I miss most is, is, is Indian humor, is native humor. Because I've learned in the white world that if you make a joke or you tease during the moment, that that is interpreted as you're not serious, you're not educated. You know what I mean? It, it's interesting where Native, because humor is intelligent. And humor is disarming. And it's beautiful. It's like letting people know, you know, I'm human, you're human, I'm speaking to your humanity. And we can laugh about stuff. It's like we were joking before when I said, when I go home, we are, everyone knows your business. And our joke is if you don't tell us, we're gonna make it up. So you better tell us what's going on. Robin was saying, moving back home now, she's more visible and everyone knows her business, where she's at, what she's doing. And I kind of, I miss that. I miss people, I miss people missing me, saying, where are you? How are you doing? Where are you at? Where we can switch. Like when I get down with Patsy and Auntie Julie in DC, you know, we'll be talking all business and then all of a sudden we'll lapse into, you know, talking about earrings and grandchildren and babies and who got married and whose memorial we're going to. And, you know, I miss that, that, that heart stuff. I miss it so much. And, um, so for me, it was a no-brainer when Patsy emailed me. Of course, I was, I feel honored that you invited me. And I'm really glad that we brought Nagin into the family because she has the tendency not to want to be upfront, but I'm glad that she's part of the family now. So thank you.
Nagin, do you have a question for us?
I have a lot. You guys are very interesting. Now I want to just dive in, but in the interest of time, I'll ask. So you guys are doing really important work and being in the media industry with this really important project. I mean, you're diving into just intensity. How do you guys handle or schedule or prioritize self-care? Even with, outside of this project, I read through all of your bios, you're working on, your, your day-to-day jobs are also incredibly intense and time-intensive. Being a woman in those, in those industries, how do you stay sane? If I may ask?
Yeah, um, for me, I think there's definitely different things that I have to do in order to stay sane. That reminds me, I mean, I have three kids that are 11 and under and I have to be really careful about, you know, what I talk about and also the energy that they might pick up on. So, you know, so I, I do explain some of these things. Children and Native children, you know, they see past pretenses. You know, so they're gonna know that I'm upset about something. And so how do I articulate or identify what that is? And how do I take a step away in order to work with that or work with a family member? And to let them know that what I'm working on is really important and, um, you don't want me needs a minute. I personally, I've also, um, been on a like 14-week health journey where I've just been, um, working out a lot more. Because I noticed, obviously, we weren't able to go to the gym. And I really needed that. I really needed to try to be healthy. And I know you brought up the pandemic, the current pandemic briefly. You know, I see a continuum, you know, I did health policy. I was appointed when I was 18 on Indian Health Service to serve on their national board. And so I've worked in health policy and MMIW issue is a health issue. And so when we look at COVID data and the discrepancies and the issues with access, I see so many different parallels to the MMIW issue and the access and the discrepancies and the disproportionately impacted. But I had to do a kind of a self-check and realize I was internalizing and holding a lot of this in. And so for me, I had to do a health journey because that's what I have control over. And so I talk to my kids all the time right now, like this is, this is not about me, like, you know, trying to be a certain size or anything like this. This is me being as strong as I can. So if and when anything does come to us, that mommy is, is really strong.
Yeah, I'll just give my brief response to that question. For me, it's, it's about our children. You know, we're about taking care of our children, protecting our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren. It's about our future as well. While, you know, today I'm considered an elder and a great-grandmother. And I recognize the impact that this issue has had on our families and their voice. I also see the need for us to prepare ourselves for the lives of our children's future as well. And so the communication that we have with our children, grandchildren is important so that they know what life is about, being an Indigenous person. They, you know, it's important for them to know, I'll get asked questions by my grandchildren, you know, because they're going back and forth. I'm here living with my, my son for a period of time due to, you know, their schooling that I'm helping to do. So, um, you know, we need to be truthful with them regardless of their age and, but also you have a different way of talking with them. And it's something that I also do with our, our swan dancers, our little swan dance girls that we have. We have our performance group that, that shares our social dances and the history of the Yakima Nation. And so again, it's preparing them for their future as well.
Um, and you kind of, Nagin, you kind of stole our question. We usually like to ask people what they do for self-care and what I tend to do is just beadwork. So I like to beadwork. I like to create things, though when COVID started, I hadn't beadwork in a while because I think I was just feeling the, the global depression, you know, and I just didn't want to create anything, you know, while I was feeling that. But it's slowly subsiding, so I'm starting to bead a bit more. Um, and I think the other thing is just being honest, more honest, you know? I think as we speak here, that women, when we're trying to create our communities and we're trying to, you know, unite communities, we'll always kind of put ourselves to the side. I have to be really honest. Otherwise, you know, my body will definitely punish me if I don't take care of myself. So that's one thing I've made a priority is like, okay, I gotta make sure I eat, gotta make sure I do this and not feel guilty for it. And that's a big thing. Because sometimes it's like, you know, you want to put your family first and they do. But I'm like, if I can't function, you know, normally, I can't take care of my family. So, you know, I need to be able to make sure that I'm healthy enough to, to do that. And, and honesty, also on another level, just being honest with my partner, you know, like this is what I need help with. Like I really need help with this, you know, otherwise. Or some days I'm just like, my brain is done. Can you pick out what we're eating for dinner? Even to that extent is like something that, that goes along in self-care. So if you guys are up for it, for our last portion before we get into our closing, what you both do is, for me, you know, being back in a res and thinking about Seattle, it's like, go, go, go. You know, like, next thing, go, next thing, go. What do you guys do for self-care when you guys need to slow down? And, you know, make sure that you're taking care of yourselves as well?
I'm glad that, it's interesting. I, ah, I have not been good about self-care lately. It's been a really, really difficult and emotional summer. And I think it's only been maybe the last couple of weeks where I've gotten back into, um, just recognizing that I can't fix and do everything. It's just been really hard for me because so much is expected and projected on some, some of us as being Native or being Latina and being a woman. And for self-care now, it's, this is gonna sound kind of crazy, but is recognizing that, as I tell Nagin, with, um, I'm seeing a phenomenal therapist and she's Native American and I love her dearly at the Indian Health Board. Seeing a Native American woman therapist who grew up almost exactly like me. For her to just look at me and say, "Control is an illusion. Let go. Stop." Cause no one ever tells me to stop. Or if they do, it's not, it's not in a good way. So for me, self-care now is listening to who I love, I'll say her name, Dr. Gallagher. And also picking up the phone and calling people that I miss, that I just haven't had time to call. I've been doing a lot of that, especially since losing my mom. Is reconnecting with a lot of friends that have been always there for me, but I've just been too wrapped up in this craziness of this job. And I keep putting them on the to-do list and I don't get to them. I find that that is the best medicine than, you know, than doing other things. It's just, like I say, visiting. Like today, being with you guys is good medicine. It just, it anchors me again. It, I get, I get reintroduced to my true self again. I get to see people that look like me, that talk like me, that laugh like me. And for me, that's the self-care. So, um, as they say here, you know, my hand's up to you. Thank you again, because this is more than just a podcast interview. This is actually, this is actually self-care and wellness. So thank you.
Um, and then for me, really quick, I'll just say I'm trying to read, read more books about women and leadership. And I've just started listening to Michelle Obama's podcast. And it's, um, apart from the daily reminder of our strong council member, I mean, this has been quite the year for this nation, but also to be elected in government. But to see, um, how other other women think and handle their lives and their self-care and their sensibilities. It brings a little light and hope into what, what's happening. And so that helps me kind of decompress from the daily grind. So I recommend that podcast as well.
Plus Nagin got a new puppy. That's, she's not, she's not coming clean about the new puppy she got.
She's adorable. She's my dog.
I also have a life coach that I talk with and I think mental health is so important as well. And sometimes there's a stigma about it, um, in rural settings. And so, um, I thank you for sharing that. And it reminded me that I should share it too. I've said it before, but not on this episode.
I love it. Love it.
So as we prepare to close, I'd like to just, um, extend our shared prayers and sympathy and hold up Deborah Juarez for being with us today, uh, as well as the remembrance of her mother. So I want to say thank you, Deborah, and, and bring, and thank you for bringing Nagin along to be with us. And just, just know, Deborah, that we hold you up in our prayers and our thoughts are with you today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Patsy. It means you've been so good to me. You've always been there. So thank you.
Thank you so much for having me on the show and thank you for all of your work.
So Emily and others on the podcast today, our intent today was to, to hear about the experience of our people that live in the, you know, in the cities of Seattle and Portland. And of course, Laura John couldn't be here today. However, I think it's important to point out the fact that there are people that, Native people who live in these busy places that can be overwhelming in some ways. But, uh, you know, having, in my early childhood, have been a part of the city of Seattle and the Native community since I was in high school. Taking a bus ride over there just to visit with family and friends and, uh, and just have seen the, the growth in the city of Seattle and the work that, um, our tribal communities are doing in the metropolitan areas. And, um, for instance, with the community of Portland, uh, the mayor there, uh, along with Laura John, who is now the tribal liaison, have reached out to our communities and, you know, to the tribal communities in particular to include the tribal voices in, in the work that they're doing around missing and murdered Indigenous women and people. And that's important. And so I wanted to let our viewers know that these resources are available and people like Deborah and Nagin are there in the city of Seattle and all of their support systems that they reach out to in the community. And similarly in Portland, the same thing, if we had Laura on, I know she would have told us a story about a young girl who was missing and work was done with the tribal law enforcement, along with tribal member who's working in Multnomah County, they were able to locate the They were able to locate this young girl in the city of Portland. So it's the same thing, this communication is so important. And that's, you know, why we have this podcast is also not only to build awareness and education, but also begin communicating with one another about, you know, this issue and then getting to know one another on another level, particularly with Deborah. I've known her for a long time and I'm pleased that she's helping to bring along the young sister with us, Nagin. So glad to learn more about your role, even though we've met in the past. And so that was the intent of our podcast today. And thank you all for joining us and I'll turn it over to Emily.
Can I prompt you, Councilwoman Juarez, if you would like to dedicate this episode to anybody in particular? I know you had mentioned your mom. This is just a, your time to dedicate this episode.
Thank you so much. And again, I don't think it's by accident that somehow we are here today and today is my mom's birthday. And I'm, I started this morning really sad and doing my prayers. My mother's name, as I shared, was Kanaki, which used to be my name. And Yvonne Spade was born in 1935 and I lost her in January 2020, January 24th. And unfortunately, seven months later to the day, we lost my auntie, her sister, her younger sister, Wanda Byrd, on August 24th. And so that's the last of the whole, my mom and all her siblings. And I think we have a saying in Blackfeet, when you have to, you know, you can't be that kid running around in the background anymore. You kind of have to stand and take your place. And I never wanted to do that because I always had elders like my mom and my aunties to look up to. And, and I have to recognize, as I've learned, that I have been standing and taking my place. I just didn't realize it. And so for me, October 8th, I'm going to go for a long walk after this and I'm going to burn the Blackfeet sage that I brought back from Browning two years ago from Chief Mountain. And I'm going to do my prayers. And I'm going to be, I'm going to be okay. Because one thing, I mean, it was a crazy childhood with my mother. You know, the man that raised me was Yakima, Jimmy Swizzler. But my mom raised me with some of the most valuable things that a daughter could get from a mother. And that is being brave, having courage, and also having the humility to know that there are things bigger than you. And you have to honor that, like a mountain, like a grandma. And I've worked really hard to try to be a good person. And I could not have got here, obviously, without my mom and her teachings, but I'll say it again, without all these strong native women on my journey next to me, like Patsy and Auntie Julie and Ramona, all of them. And I just want to end on that. So thank you.
Happy birthday to your mother and I thank you for joining us today on this special day. And to our other guests, Nagin. Did you have a dedication as well, Nagin? I don't think you named it right, I'm so sorry.
No, you said it, dedicated to, to Deborah's mother as well.
Thank you for joining us for this episode of War Cry Podcast. Again, this is a wrap for season one. You can see us again on Hear Us Again in June 2021, as well as anywhere podcasts are available. You can tune in or re-watch or re-listen to us. This episode is edited and produced by Robin Peewashi. Logo by John Only Schellenberger with Native Anthro. Sponsored by Native Women in Action. Shirts by Nicole Peewashi. And music by Lee Sekicopdiwa. Cheers. No.